For the band planning board, which Alan might have been on. Yeah, that was in the early 90s I did that. But more recently, I've been hired to work on a natural resource protection zoning NRPG by law. To make some improvements on an earlier graph that you had last year. So for the last year, the planning board and I have been working on that along with a few associated bylaws, one for a shared driveway provision and another one for rural fighting principles and then some language in your subdivision regulations that all kind of works together as you'll see. So I think the first thing I'll do is give you folks a little PowerPoint show. I did this last time, I've done it several times in Ashby, but it kind of gets folks up to speed with what this type of bylaw is and can also ask, answer specific questions about your particular bylaw. Although in the world of NRPG, it's fairly mainstream. Number of towns have adopted, including some around you, so we're continuing to work on it. But let me, let me share my screen if possible and we'll do.
You have, you have access.
I have access, okay. Now I just need to find it.
Down at the bottom, it should be a green highlighted button, share screen.
Yep, I have, I have that, I just need to find my.
Oh, your document.
My PowerPoint.
And, and, and look at Terry, you've changed so much.
I won't go into what I had to do to change like that, but we'll discuss it later.
Okay, here we go. Oh, that's the end, okay, you don't want it to end first. Lots of pictures. Okay, here we go. Natural Resource Protection Zoning NRPG modeled for Massachusetts and elsewhere. So this is all part of work that I do, I call it the Conservation Friendly Zoning Toolkit. Natural Resource Protection Zoning is, is the kind of the crown jewel in that. Also transfer of development rights, that's not a part of what we're, what Ashby's doing. A flexible frontage, I don't believe we're doing that either. Growth areas, home occupations, accessory apartments, working landscape, these are all other components to a, to a complete approach to conservation friendly zoning that deals with not only land protection, but housing opportunities and economic opportunities, which are all important. But we're focusing on the top one, Natural Resource Protection Zoning for right now. This is a subdivision in a town near you, not too far away. And it's important to understand subdivision in Massachusetts before we can understand NRPG, because NRPG is a, a different way to do subdivisions. This is a typical subdivision. And what you see here is a town road and another town, existing town road, and then a whole bunch of intervening land. And there are some frontage lots along the town roads on either side, but in order to really develop this, a developer must construct a lot of new roadway. Couple of cul-de-sacs, big long through road here, and they're doing that for two reasons. One is access and the other is to create frontage. Because in Massachusetts and most states, you need a certain amount of road frontage to make a building lot, then you also need a certain amount of area. And the need for road frontage, especially long lengths of road frontage, 100, 150, 200, 250, 300 feet, I think you folks have 200. That means a lot of new road has to be constructed in order to get lots of lots on a big piece of land. So the construction of a road is not something a developer would necessarily prefer to do a lot of, but they must do a lot of it in order to get the lots that they need to make the project economic. That's kind of subdivision 101. Here's a subdivision in a town in central Mass, a little southwest of you. This town decided that three acre zoning, that's increasing the size of the lots and, and the frontages, three acre zoning, I think 300 feet of frontage would help solve their rural sprawl problems and retain rural character. Well, someone took them up on it and did a subdivision and this is what it looks like. The lawns are almost too large to mow, but way too small to plow. So just great big lawns separating houses that are located far apart, but it's still, it's still a subdivision. This comes from New York, I grew up in this town in upstate New York. This is five acre zoning. These lots are long and linear, they, they come from the, the road over by this fence and they extend way back. And this was all a field, used to be a horse farm here. In fact, I worked here when I was a kid, when it was all a horse farm, but now it's a house farm. And you, and this is a picture of that same area from above, and you can see those houses we were just looking at are right here. And those lots go way back, so they make five acres. And you can see how this low density, five acre zoning is just chewing up the rural landscape in this area of, of the town of Chester, New York, at a pretty rapid rate. There's still some left, but who knows how much longer it'll last when it's being developed in five acre chunks. Cluster zoning is often thought to be the, the solution and it is often a better solution to subdivision. Here is a subdivision in Rutland, Rutland, Mass, which is the south of you. Long time ago, maybe 25 or more years ago, I wrote the bylaw that created this subdivision. It's okay, it's a little better than a conventional subdivision, but still, there's not a lot of open space, you know, small areas here are open space, but most of it is, is, is developed. And you can see the overall layout. This project is bounded in dark black line here. And you can see that the open spaces are linear, they're corridors, they follow streams and wetlands, they're peripheral lands. Unfortunately, with many cluster bylaws, they're written in a way that pretty much all the developable land gets developed and the undevelopable stuff, peripheral stuff, wetlands, things like that get tossed into the open space. Not, not exactly the, the outcome that folks were hoping for. Some clusters are nice, I think they're a good suburban type model. Here's one in Belcher Town, it's called Dana Woods Cluster Subdivision. And this is a three acre common around which there are modest homes, kind of a middle income starter home around this common. Common is used for recreational purposes, it's scenic, it makes a nice amenity, but it's not wildlife habitat, it's not farmland, it's not forestry, it's, it's not rural land, it's more like parkland. And that's what I think cluster is, is good for, creating nice little parks. But Ashby is still a rural town, so NRPG is rural zoning, so that's why the planning board has been going down this road with, with me. First Natural Resource Protection Zoning was adopted in 2008 in my town of Shrewsbury, where I've been on the planning board for way too long. And since then, any number of towns have adopted. And it's become rather popular since then. So let's see, my mouth, my mouth is dying here. And the, the desire, the desire of NRPG is pretty much depicted in this picture. All the resources you see here, the historic farmstead, the open fields, the hills, forested hillsides, all of these things are designed to be protected while some houses are built. But the, the objective is to protect the landscape first and build some houses second. It has a pedigree, NRPG comes from cluster zoning because there is permanent conservation land and, and reduced lot sizes for houses, that has that in common with cluster. It also comes from large lot zoning because it is very low density. Not a lot of houses come off of, of a certain amount of land, it's, it's low density. And then a fixed area ratio zoning approach that, that we originally looked to Maryland and Pennsylvania to get, where instead of basing the amount of, of building lots on the amount of frontage that could be built, road frontage, it's based on area instead. So it's an area based formula. Common elements of NRPG, it's by right and applies to all subdivisions. Subdivision is considered a by right process and NRPG is the zoning that would apply to any subdivision in Ashby. There's an optional special permit for non-subdivision projects, so if it's not a subdivision, there's going to be no new subdivision road constructed, it's simply going to be off of an existing Ashby road, then projects like this could come in under a special permit. That's a landowner option. Deviations are by special permit only, so anything in the, in the bylaw is waivable for one reason or another, but there are standards for that and you need a special permit. If land, or if landowner thinks they have a, a better design, but they need to deviate from some specification in the bylaw, they can request a special permit to do that. Very low density for Massachusetts. The development rights were all calculated by formula. Substantial open space preserved between 65 and 90%. Conservation analysis and findings process, this is, this is about as close to discretionary as it gets on the part of the planning board. And you'll see later how, how this works. And this is really where the design is kind of, is kind of figured out between the applicant and the planning board. Greater design flexibility in the developed areas. We'll see, we'll see about that later. Diversity of housing types. I encourage towns to allow all of the housing types they would ordinarily allow in town, which could include multifamily duplex, additional accessory apartments, things like that, it all works well. Shared driveways, shared driveways would, would replace long lengths of subdivision roadway. Cheaper to build, less unsightly than large roads, so options for shared driveways. And then earned density bonus options, and that's if the town chooses, that's not a part of your bylaw. Planning board has decided not to go that, that route right now. And also transfer development rights option if the town chooses, and again, Ashby's not chosen to go that route at this time. These two add a bit of complexity and length to the bylaw. So Ashby Planning Board is going to keep it a little more simple and straightforward at this point. So here's an example of how it might work. This is called the 100 acre wood, this is about 100 acres, taken from an actual piece of land, I think in New Salem. The town road runs along the upper portion, here are some house lots that have already been developed. Here's an old farmstead here, open field, some undeveloped road frontage, large block of forested land, probably, probably 90 acres of forested land here. This is a steep part right in the middle, and then there's a trail that runs through the property. This is a trail that's been around for a long time, it connects into the field and runs off into a decent property. And then at the bottom, the lower area, there's a large wetland complex with a stream running through it. So this is the, this is the parcel and if developed conventionally under the bylaws that existed in that town, possibility of 34 lots. And that would, that would be a combination of road front, a few road front lots and a new road, new subdivision road that would go in to provide frontage to build all these. Pops in here, comes around and pops out there. Here's a little clearer of, of the slopes and because of the Wetlands Protection Act, steer's a little bit clear of the wetlands, although it is fairly close. So that's 34 under the zoning that they used to have. NRPG example, this particular one brought it down to 14, from 34 to 14, given how the, they initially wrote the numbers. Eventually it was rewritten, so this would go up to 20, there'd be 20 units up here because they changed those numbers. But this is, this is 14. Much less road built, there's one little looping road segment that goes here and then another one that comes out here to a cul-de-sac. And I think there's one shared driveway to serve a couple of houses out here. So a lot less road built, quite a bit fewer houses. The field remains open, a little bit of road frontage is, is kept open. All development is quite a ways from the wetland. The trail stays in place and there, there's still a significant area of forest, either for recreation for these folks, or if the original owner maintained it, they could continue forestry operations on here. There's another example from Wendell, this is 60 acres. The town road is down here, this is the parcel in black, under their old zoning, it would be 18 units altogether. And notice how it connects back to the road. Sometimes what developers do, and it was possible in this case, is they'll buy an additional piece of land so that they can connect back to the town road, go in here, around here, and then back out. And that's what, that's what was possible here, that's what happens in this instance. So the subdivision roadway comes in here and this creates all of the frontage for all of these lots, there's a little bit of a cul-de-sac right there. So 18. And if this project was done according to the NRPG that they did adopt and pass, it could look like this, so going from 18 down to 12, 12 units. No need to buy any additional land. The subdivision road comes in here, runs back, runs around a little forested common, serves a bunch of houses around here, and then there's two shared driveways, one here serving three and one here serving two. You get 12 houses off of a small amount of road and a couple of shared driveways and the rest remains as open space. So again, this is all, these basic numbers are created by formula. And I'll, I'll show it, it actually is all represented on a sheet that looks like this, the worksheet, looks like a IRS tax form, works the same way. And if these pass, I'll create one for you for, for Ashby so they're easy to figure out. But first you calculate dwelling units, you take the whole project area in acres, you subtract all or part of the constrained lands, and these are wetlands, steep slopes, lands with easements, prohibiting development, surface waters, things like that. And then you divide by a selected divisor, density divisor, and that equals the maximum number of dwellings. This will, this basic mapped information here will give you the maximum number of dwellings, so you know that. Preserved land, again, the whole parcel area, you multiply that by the required percentage in your bylaw, it's, it's 0.8, but it can be from 0.6 to 0.9, so it's 0.8, and that equals the minimum acreage of preserved land. And then finally, developable land, that's how much land these units can go on, again, the whole project area, and then you subtract whatever you came out with here for open space, and that gives you the maximum acreage of developable land to put those houses on. And that's all done through this plug and chug form, taking basic mapped information and turning it into dwelling units, amount of open space required and the land left over to be developed. And after you know those metrics, the conservation analysis findings process begins and the analysis is done by the applicant. They look at the criteria in the bylaw, you know, what the town, what the town wants to achieve, what its priorities are, and they will create a plan that's based on those numbers, showing where development is going to occur, where the open space will be, what the access is, how the development of the whole parcel is laid out, that gets submitted to the planning board and the planning board makes conservation findings. And those findings can either affirm the analysis and approve it, they can alter it, make conditions, or if there's no ability to approve it, they can reject it. So that's, that's the design process. And how that would work back on the 100 acre wood here, knowing that, oops, sorry, taking this and turning it into that, what kind of factors are considered? Well, one factor is that you have an existing town road, there's already some development on it, there's already some undeveloped land up here that looks pretty good, there's, this is a town that's mostly forested, so they value fields quite a bit. Here's a little more agricultural land here. This is a big block of, 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 a good stand of forest that can be managed for forestry, water resources down here, steep, difficult to develop land here, and this, this recreational trail, it's been open for, for years and years. So those would be factors that the applicant would be asked to consider in their conservation analysis. And that could produce a plan like this, that, that keeps the field intact, that provides, that doesn't fully develop the roadside, that manages to keep the trail and keeps all of the development well away from the wetlands and water resources down below and creates a nice neighborhood layout where many of these houses abut directly onto the open space, enhancing their value. Just another couple of quick examples, this is an over 100 acre project in Wendell that was just approved. The boundaries of this project go right around here, following my cursor. This is, this is one entrance, there's a house here already and a house here already, and this, and this in yellow is one of the building envelopes, this is part of the developable area of this. And the other building envelope is down here. And again, this gets access right here from the town road and this gets access right here from the town road. And the rest of this is all, is all preserved, this is great big wetland with a heron rookery, there's a large field here and there's a pond down, pond shore down here, and the rest of this has been sustainably managed for forestry. So, so this is it, well, units are allowed or allowed within these two yellow areas and the rest is preserved in perpetuity. Here's one in my town, I believe this was the first, this is 45 acres, I think. This was a, a single driveway that led to this house, and this was converted to a shared driveway in this process and five lots were created. Three of them were sold to the, the water supply, Amherst Water Supply next door and then two of them were buildable. So it was actually five potential lots, only two of them get built, built upon, and all the rest in the green is, is preserved. Getting towards the end here, here's an example from Wendell of how this could be used in a non-subdivision setting. This is an existing town road, I think this might be about 18 acres or so, that there's one existing house with a driveway that winds out to the road like this. This were to be developed conventionally by the old way in Wendell, there's enough frontage and area for one, two, three more houses, and this of course would be the original one. So this would be the standard thing to, to, to expect along a rural road, but if they applied for a special permit to do an NRPG, that could have been, that could be changed to something like this, where the private driveway was changed to a shared driveway and one, two, three, same number of, of houses were, were created off of this shared driveway, community gardens here, all houses have access to the open space and the owner retains their privacy in the rear. And when we actually showed this to the owner after, after doing it, he, he said, my goodness, if I ever develop my property, now I can do it like this, I'm going to, this is nice. So this is the non-subdivision approach because no new road was created, it was just a shared Getting towards the end, landowner acceptance of low density NRPG, why would, why would landowners go for this, which they do generally, these things have been pretty much overwhelmingly voted in in the towns I've worked in. Prompt and predictable permitting, it's by right and it's by formula, so there's, there's not a lot of dickering around, it's pretty much, it's pretty straightforward. Greater design flexibility, there's no lot area specified, you know, septics and wells will dictate that, there's no specified frontage either, so you can have very short road runs if, if you wish, or, or use shared driveways. And no setback requirements from lot lines other than a 10 foot setback just to make sure you've got some appropriate distance from a lot line. So design flexibility, housing diversity, I encourage all housing types be allowed. Attractive features, the biggest one, the big elephant in the room is lower infrastructure cost, that really means something. Roads don't have to be nearly as long, I think roads cost $300 a foot to build in Massachusetts. If you can minimize road length, all the better for a landowner developer. Shared driveways and then tent density bonuses in TDR, which are not part of your proposal right now. And then the owner may, the owner themselves may retain the resource lands up to 90% of the total parcel area. So if you have somebody who farms, has a state that they really want to continue to live on, but are having a meeting to raise capital to afford to stay there, they can do that and then they can keep their, they can keep their property. So more information, that's my contact information, my partner in all this has been Joel Russell, who's a land use attorney, he also writes these bylaws as a, as a planning consultant. So that's, that's that. I hope that wasn't too long, once I get going, I don't really keep track of time when you're having this much fun.
Jeff, thank you very much. Maybe we could see if there's some questions, but I also wanted to put in a request for you to show the overlook drive Bright Meyer options.
I would, I would be happy to do that. If there are any questions now on the slideshow, I could answer, try to answer those first and then we could move on to the Bright Meyer project, which is an example in Ashby.
If you want to speak, feel free to unmute yourself. feel free to unmute yourself and ask a question.
Hi, it's Kathy Kathy Panajowdis. I just put a note in the chat. Every every Zoom meeting is different. So I would ask Jeff that you show that these are all single family homes. And what does it mean from a conservation viewpoint if these homes were built as two and a half or three stories? And they were two or three family homes? That's my question.
Sure. The the formulas can be written. The formulas are written for dwelling units. And if if your town allows duplexes with two or triplexes with three or accessory apartments, you can very well do it that way. I I encourage towns to allow all the housing types that that you would ordinarily allow. If you wanted to get into the area of of density bonuses and were interested in in promoting a certain type, housing type, you you might want to think about providing a density bonus for, you know, building other than single family dwellings. But it's really what the town what the town decides to allow. And and what the developer might be induced to build. Many, you know, developers will calculate based on 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 profit margins, I mean, I think most developers are like car companies. They'd rather be they'd rather be building Chevy Tahos than Chevy Vegas. They make a lot more on a Tahoe. So anyway, that that's kind of up to you folks politically. It'll all fit. In fact, the more you go towards multifamily, the easier it is to site these. Easier it is to preserve a lot of open space and concentrate what development there is.
Could I just address it? This is Alan Pease. Yeah, this, just so we're clear, this this bylaw doesn't change the permitted housing types at all. So currently in the town, we allow single family residential with an accessory apartment. And this, that's all that would be allowed under this currently. If at some future point you wanted to allow like duplexes or triplexes, then they would be permitted under this. In other words, this doesn't regulate the housing type. It uses the existing housing type.
Okay, let me share the, let me share the Bright Meyer example, okay? Yes, that's okay. Let's find it. Somewhere here I had a a picture of it. Where is it?
There's no pressure at all, Jeff, just no problem.
Okay, well, I'm I'm sweating here because I had I had a picture of this of this thing, this project. For those who don't know what it looks like. Okay, are are most people familiar with Highland Drive Bright Meyer project?
It's it's overlooked drive. It's it's on Richardson Road. The design, the approved subdivision is on Richardson Road, but it's not been built.
Yeah. Not sure where this thing is.
Um, you know what, Jeff, why don't you keep looking? We have
I thought it was Old Northfield.
What'd you say? Wait, just did somebody speak?
Yes, I did. I said, I think it's Old Northfield you're talking about, not Richardson.
Yeah, you're right.
All right, I'm I'm gonna find this thing.
While while Jeff is looking, we have a new town administrator in Ashby and I believe she is here. And we would be happy to introduce herself. And so why don't we take this moment to do that and then we'll take all the pressure. Oh, well, never mind. Forget it, Christine. We're gonna do this and then we'll come to you.
Yeah, you know, what happens if I said that I'm getting upstaged, you know, I really got on the stick here and
Oh, that's good job.
And produce. No, I I'd be happy if you introduced the new town administrator. This will keep. I mean, people can just take this in for a second. Go ahead, please.
Okay, Christine, would you like to introduce yourself and welcome very much to Ashby and to our scintillating planning board meeting?
You should be able to unmute yourself, Christine, if you're there. All right, we may have to swing back around to her. I'll check in.
All right. Go ahead, Jeff.
Okay, I think I put it to sleep. Anyway, here's a project from Ashby. I don't know a whole lot about it except seeing maps. It it's called, what is it called? Bright Meyer, right? That's that's how everybody knew it. And it 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 derives its its access from from a easement off of a town road that runs through this piece of property, right, smack through a well is actually into this piece. So the property itself looks like that. And then over here on this side is Route thirty one. And within this project, under your current bylaws, six houses could be developed and it's one, two, three, four, five, six houses on six lots. With tons of of sloopy land and wetland over on this side of the parcel. So I did an analysis of of this project. Both from you know, the the way it was done, the conventionally done and approved. And the way this property could be developed as a subdivision under the NRPC bylaw that you have been working on. So let me switch from this over to over to the worksheet. Everybody see that? Okay, that's the Ashby NRPC worksheet. And this is for a conventional residential subdivision of Overlook Drive, Bright Meyer. So again, this is like the one I showed you in the slideshow. First, you consider dwelling units. And you determine the acreage of the entire project. In this case, it's nineteen point six five acres. And that's true for both. That's the overall size. The term of the acreage in the residential agricultural zone, in case there's two different zones here. But in this case, no, both, it's all in the in the regas zone and it's nineteen point six five in both cases. Now here's where it starts to get a little different. Determine the acreage of constrained lands. You know, the slopes, freshwater wetlands, buffer zones, water resource areas, restricted areas. You don't do that in the existing example, so that's NA. But in the NRPC, you find eight point five four acres is constrained. And subtractable. So here you subtract, as indicated above, the acreage is from three, from the total area in two. And so nineteen point six five minus eight point five four equals eleven point eleven acres left over. And then you divide that remainder acreage by five. That's the density divisor that you folks have selected for your bylaw. And round down to equal the base number of dwelling units. So eleven point eleven divided by five equals two. And then you arrive at the maximum number of dwelling units. And in your in your current example, it's six. In the NRPC, it would be two. So that's quite a reduction. And and that reduction is mostly because there's so much constrained land on here. If if there was less constrained land, you know, this might be, this might be three. But given how much constrained land with slopes and and wetlands, that's only two. So then you figure out open space, multiply the total acreage by point eight. Again, you don't do that in the existing one. And RPZ one nineteen point six five times point eight equals fifteen point seven two. That's how much open space is going to be preserved in perpetuity from this project. And you arrive at the total acreage of open space. None for the existing project. And fifteen point seven two, eighty percent for the NRPC. Finally, developable land. Subtract subtract the amount of open space. Again, from the total to arrive at the area acreage remaining for development. And in the existing, you don't do that. So you get the whole thing to develop nineteen point six five. It's all developed. Six lots, three point two two eight acres per lot average. So the whole thing is developed. Here in the NRPC, you preserve fifteen point seven two. So that leaves three point nine three for development of two houses, which would average one point nine six acres per lot. Plenty of area for wells and septic on there. So that's that's how this works. And that's how it would work for that particular, that particular project. So any any questions or thoughts or comments on on the Brett Meyer project?
So does this mean everybody's gonna vote for this? Thank you, Harold. Um, Bruce, you you are an experienced person at reading bylaws and plans. And you had picked up last year on one of the fatal flaws of this zoning. What do you see this time? Is there anything that you'd like to say about it or questions you'd like to ask or perspective you'd like to provide?
Just for comments, I just don't know if it's gonna attract more developers. I mean, as far as, say, if you had a an eighty acre piece that you know, you could probably get, say, whatever amount of houses, but you don't have to have that longer roadway. So it cuts cuts like this, you know, like he was saying earlier, it cuts the the cost down dramatically. So for a developer, I mean, even if he can only get five lots as opposed to, I don't know how many. The fact is, the price whoever owns the land would bring the value of the land down because you've got less house lots. So it may be it's gonna bring land values down and then it'd be more attractive to a developer because he doesn't have to put a long road in, you know, I mean, I think I think also you just can look at the contours of Ashby. One thing I, one piece of property I can think of, there's an eighty acre piece that I can think about hand, which right now probably has A and R lots, probably has three lots on eighty acres. And when you get into the property and it's it's hilly, it's it's all ledge in the back. So you know, this here could go for this piece here, it could go from, say, getting, say, three lots as opposed to be able to get more lots because, you know, you're condensing more in the front where, you know, that that acreage would go away under the convention. That's just a thought, you know, it's I'm not thinking one way or the other.
Yeah, if if eighty acres was perfectly developable, it would be sixteen. There could be sixteen houses there.
Right.
Along with sixty four acres of preserved land.
Okay.
So that that preserves, that eighty percent preserve doesn't go away. That's always there with you.
Okay, so on that eighty acres, what would you get for house lots on under this this bylaw?
You mean sizes?
Yeah.
Under a, under a perfect scenario, if if the whole thing were were developable, not a single constraint, you got all sixteen. You had all sixteen, there would be sixteen each on an acre.
Sixteen houses on an acre?
Each on an acre.
Okay.
With sixty four of open space.
Yeah, so that's what I'm getting at. You know, I'm using the example, this typical piece right now is you know, it's not even, you couldn't even put a subdivision in because it's it's not, it's all because of the contour and ledge and but I do know, like, say, he could get now, we're down to, you know, closer to the road, the property is it's more desirable, it's purgable. And so instead of getting, say, three lots, you know, he would get more lots on this particular piece. So it goes one way or the other, you know, when you just explained over on the Old Northfield Road, you know, the number of houses go down. In some cases, it may go up. So it may just balance out.
The 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 other thing is I mean, the sixteen would would be the result of a perfect piece of land.
Right.
With no constraints. Once you start subtracting away constrained land, then then the number of houses goes down. You know, on that that piece that that I I did, you had almost twenty acres there. So if it was twenty acres, you could get four. But because of all the constrained lands, you're only gonna get, even even if that was twenty, you'd still only get four, you only get, only get two. Because of all that wet slope stuff. So it sounds like the parcel you're talking about would have some constrained land, which would, which would eat into that.
Right, you know, it's some constrained land.
Yeah.
Another question I have too, you said earlier that an architect would do this layout. Now, would
They don't have to. It doesn't have to be an architect.
Could be the engineer. I'm just saying, I mean, say you take and pick out a certain area. And then, you know, the engineer, the the developer's engineer with a board health goes out and start doing their perk testing everything. And they find out, oh, jeez, this area here is, doesn't even make sense, but we'll go way in further. We can, we can do it, you know, so I mean, how does this all come into play?
That's that's the dynamic of the conservation analysis and findings.
Okay.
And and the idea is that, you know, the the planning board is is gonna be interested in in preserving the resources that should be preserved on site. And the developer is gonna be interested in getting in as many allowable good house sites as they can. Marketable, valuable house sites. And occasionally, there's gonna be tension there. And and they're gonna have to, they're gonna have to work it out. The planning board ultimately has the final say.
Yeah. Reason I bring these questions up is because, I mean, there's people on now, you know, and they're, you know, they know it's question and answers, but you know, I've made this comment before that once it goes to town meeting, I mean, this is quite deep and for somebody to get up and make a presentation in five minutes, you know, for the for a resident that's gonna be voting, you know, it may be quite complicated for them. And in that case, they may vote against it. That's the only reason I'm trying to, you know, see others, you know, they have questions, you know, bring it up. So, you know, we can feel these things out.
And, and it's always a, it's always a question of, of what are the politics of the town? Who's gonna show up at the town meeting? How far can you push these? I mean, this is, this is quite low density and, and you've got a lot of, of constrained land listed that, that come off.
Right.
I mean, you, you even take ten percent off for roads and designing efficiencies. So, so you're really chopping down the amount that you divide by. That eighty would, would, would come way down. All the slopes would come off there, the wetlands would come off there. Ten percent of the developable area would come off of there for roads. So, and, you know, you can adjust the numbers. I mean, I've, I've had towns go up to, your density divisor is five. I've had towns go up to seven and a half. The, the one we wrote for the Adirondacks, the density divisor was forty three point seven. So, but that's another state and another whole set of laws. Seven and a half was the, the steepest one. And that's a town right near you, Peterson. They wanted something really aggressive and they thought they could pass it and they did.
So, so Bruce, part of what we're doing is trying to get as many people aware of this and supportive of it before the last minute and lots of space for people to be talking to their neighbors and, and being supportive of it. So, you know, I think that what it comes down to in town meeting is that the people who are in favor, make sure they show up. And they already understand it because we've had four thousand presentations over the last four years. And we're all, you know, like, okay, ready, we're ready. So, yeah, do we have other, other questions, comments? Harold, go ahead.
Some of the developers I'm, I'm familiar with and I actually, I actually have a little tour that I can give if any, if anybody was interested in, in going on a tour, it's like a half a dozen of these, of these projects in, in and around my area. And the, the usual result is the landowner, the landowner didn't get the big honkin' subdivision that was possible on the property. They got something quite a bit less, but they actually got something. And they didn't have to build a mile of road. They got something and they preserved a heck of a lot of their land and they're still living on it. So when I take people on, on the tour, that's sort of what they'll say, you know, we didn't make a killing and, and, and move to Florida. We did pretty good here, we like it. And it's still nice enough that we wanna live here. And we are. That's pretty much what you'll hear so far. Yeah, and, and, and this, but what this bylaw does is say, nah, that's not what we really wanna be doing in Ashby. We, we have another model for development in mind that we think is fair. But it, and it's not, it's not necessarily gonna make a millionaire out of you. You'll do okay. And it's not gonna wreck the town in the process either.
Jeannie, I have a comment, Gary Bear.
Sure, Gary.
To Bruce's point, I think a lot of people in town know areas near them that they can relate to, right? And part of what I'm gonna run around my mind is how to present this, right? So if there was a way to say, here's, and I'll make up the number, six things in town that went sideways, right? And if we had applied this, people like concrete examples, right? And so Jeff, when you showed the lot and what it would have been or what it is now, and I'm in my neighborhood, I'm thinking of the piece across the road here, the old Capo construction from nineteen ninety where they had seventy acres and they tried to jam a subdivision in there of twenty, thirty houses and it was six. But when they left, they left the homeowners holding a road and it's kind of been a weird situation. So I think the best way to present it is some examples in town that show, here's what it is now, here's what it was before it was developed. And here's what it would have been under this, so people can really sink their teeth into something that's local to them.
Yeah, that's, that's what I tried to do with the Bretmeyer one, because I understand it was a bit controversial and.
And it's not that I'm for or against, and I'm just trying to think of ways, to Bruce's point, to simplify it down to the average person who doesn't go to a lot of town meetings, they don't pay attention to the details of zoning. They just want concrete examples to make sure that yet another zoning thing will be passed and then some developer will come along and figure out how to game it. And people go, oh my God, right? We, we didn't think of that, right? And after you've lived in town, there's been a couple of examples of, see, that guy was smarter than we were, right? And that's what people really worry about. That's where the no vote comes from, is what's gonna happen that we didn't anticipate, right? And that's my only feedback for trying to present at a town meeting.
Yeah, it's definitely, it's definitely the big question. I, I think there's a risk of doing hypothetical things, hypothetical new development plans to properties that have already been developed. Because you don't really wanna tell people that they're, that, that, you know, you don't really wanna tell them that where they're living doesn't work, right? They're not gonna feel very good about that, which is why the Bretmeyer example is so excellent because it's actually an approved subdivision that actually hasn't been built yet and that would actually be dramatically different and way better for the, for the, for the land.
That's a good point, but I think, like, right behind me, we have that big sixty odd acre chunk that the guy from Chelmsford bought and has been sitting on for thirty five years, right? And someday that's gonna be developed. And there are all these sections around town that were like, if that gets developed, you know, we're putting a for sale sign out kinda deal, right? And so that's, that's, that's the average voter who, it's not my land, but it will change my whole neighborhood. And that would be the thing I would need to get over. In particular, my wife who has horses and rides out of the property, right? Those are the people that are your, you know, boots on the ground, they're gonna vote either for or against it, kinda thing. Thank you, it was a good presentation, though, thank you.
Obviously, we won't be doing this presentation at town meeting, which is why this is our second or third. And we are having, besides our public hearing, our official public hearing in, in March, we're gonna have Jeff do a final presentation in April to hopefully, when it will be sort of in people's minds. And there's good information on the website, on the Town of Ashby website, in the planning board zone.
When the big calls come, it's because someone heard a rumor that either this is gonna screw your life up or you're gonna make millions, right? And it's usually not because they paid attention or they heard the details or they thought it through, right? If someone got them all riled up, right? So that's, the, the audience for town meeting is very different than this audience because I think a lot more of us pay a little more attention to the details. But it's, it's that disurging the rumor that it's either gonna hurt you or make you a millionaire kinda thing as opposed to the fine details of it. But that's, that's just my opinion.
No, you're right. It, it, what, what we, what would be great is to keep a positive buzz going about that this is actually about protecting our, our town in a way that most people really want. I mean, people really want, I mean, we're living in a rural town because we like living in a rural town. It's not because it's super convenient. So, I mean, I, I know many of the people, I know many of the names here, and I know that it's a group of people. And, and really in all of the, in all of the presentations we've had, people want to live in Ashby that looks like Ashby. And they're scared that this change will make it not look like Ashby. Whereas my belief is that this change will allow it to continue to look like Ashby in the next fifty years. And, you know, and, and just for the more, more people that can say this is what they think, this is, you know, Jeff has had lots of experience with this, he's seen it working in towns. We're pretty confident that it's, you know, we had a cluster, we had a, we had a, a form of a cluster bylaw which luckily never got utilized. Because I don't think that it, it doesn't give a, it doesn't continue with a rural look and it's more of a suburban look. And this will really give us more of a rural look as, as, as parcels come up for sale. So, anyway, I don't need to be talking. Do other people have concerns, questions, thoughts, Bruce?
Just one comment is, is like, you know, say, I don't know, five, ten years ago, Ashby wasn't really like a desirable place to live because people had to travel as a way out. But ever since the pandemic and, you know, more people work from home and more people are gonna continue to work from home and people wanting to get out of the city because of the pandemic, towns like Ashby are coming more desirable to live in. And that's one of the reasons why even the cost of housing has gone up in this town.
It's up and down.
Well, if, if, if you get the, generally, my task has been to, to convince landowners and, landowners and maybe prospective developers in, in a town, that this is not gonna wipe them out. That they're not gonna get as many units. They're, they're gonna have to dedicate quite a bit of open space. But they have, there are aspects that will be desirable. It's, it's prompt and predictable, there's, there's a lot of design flexibility. There's the ability not to have to create two to two hundred and fifty feet of roadway for every house. You know, there are offsets to the, to the reduced number of houses and, and dedication of so much open space. There are offsets that, that will keep the, the return on investment not too much different for them. That's often my challenge, is, is talking to those kinda folks. And we used to have workshops in, in some towns where people would be invited to bring in their plans. And we'd sit down at tables and, and rough out conventional subdivisions and then rough out an NRPC subdivision based on the map data that they'd give us. And, and we'd have calculators and we'd try to figure it out for them. I mean, we went to that extent when we first passed this in, in, in my town. It took us four years. And, but if, if you get the sense in Ashby that, that the, the worry is that, that this is gonna look too good, it can be made to be less good. You know, throw in a hundred feet of frontage for every house. You know, there's other things you can do if, if, if you wanna make it not look so, you know, yeah. You'll get more roads if that's what you want, if you want a lot of roads, you can get them, you can require them. They'll be expensive to build and, I don't know. So there, there's ways to adjust it. And, and I can make whatever adjustments are needed to assuage the doubts. But you have to figure out what the most salient doubts are in your town. What's, what's really gonna happen politically at town meetings?
Well, the answer to that is nobody knows. Now, meeting is always.
What is, what is the proposed frontage under this bylaw?
The proposed frontage, Jeff?
None. There isn't, there, there is not a frontage requirement. There's a requirement for legal and practical access to it, you know, to an acceptable road, either directly across frontage, the length of which it's not specified, or shared driveways.
You talking Eastman also? I mean, say, often, I mean, eventually this road is gonna be turned over to the town to maintain. So you saying, you say none frontage, no frontage, does that mean that a house could have an easement to get to it?
It, it could come off of a shared driveway. Yep, a shared driveway easement, yep.
All right, so how many, I'm just, you know, questions here, like, how many shared, how many houses are we putting on a shared driveway?
I think, I think it's four. We, we have a separate shared driveway provision for this, it's called the NRPC shared driveway. And I believe it's capped at three or four. The one you've got now is two.
Now, we have two, right now is two, it can't be any more than eight hundred feet.
Right, so we drafted up another one that would go with these projects only. And I think, I think it's four.
I, I think you're right, Jeff.
Yep.
Yeah, it's four and it has a little larger standard at the request of the fire department than our existing two-house common driveway. So it has to be a little wider, it has to have a turnaround at the end and things like that. It's got a little more, little more substance to it for public safety reasons than the current common driveway.
And, and once again, those are, those are created by special permit. So if you want shared driveways, you have to get a special permit. So, you know, maybe, maybe the idea of putting too much, relying too much on shared driveways is, is not a good one so they don't get all their special permits, so they have to build a little road.
Do we have other, other thoughts, questions?
I mean, another way to do it is, another way to approach it is take your constrained land and bolster them a little bit. You've got percentages for slopes, you could drop those a little bit. You've got, let's see, oh, you've got wetlands and the buffer, that all comes out. You've gotten pretty aggressive with taking away the constrained land. So you might, you might wanna think about that, you take a little more away, that'll cut, that'll cut the housing unit. Because what you're doing is you're taking the total and you're just taking all this constrained land away and whatever's left gets divided by that, that density divisor. Another way to do it is increase your density divisor to six. You know, if, if this is the worry that I'm picking up, it doesn't have to be five. Five is kind of the common one that many towns have adopted. You could, like I say, Peterson went. You could, like I say, Peter Sam went for seven and a half. You could do six. That'll bring units down. More constrained land, higher density divisor, less units.
So while people are thinking about this, why don't we take a moment to introduce Christine Lindberg, our new town administrator? So I'll just say welcome. The floor is yours.
Well, thank you so much for having me tonight. Um, I wanted to just introduce myself and, uh, this is my first week on the job. I've enjoyed it very much. It's been very busy. But one of my goals was to, um, attend all of the different board and committee meetings, introduce myself. So everybody, um, can put, uh, a face with the name. Let you know that if there's anything I can do to assist you, please don't hesitate to reach out. I'll be in town hall five days a week. I'm like nine to five at night at meetings, things like that. So stop by, send me an email, make an appointment. Anytime I'm, I'm available and I, I want to thank everyone that I've met so far. I've been so super nice and very, very helpful. So I'm really excited to be here and to, uh, to work with you.
Well, welcome. It's, uh, it's great to have a person in the place.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's, it's great. So I hope, um, I hope things go well enough that you'll be really happy here.
Like I said, so far, so good. So I'm riding, I'm riding that wave right now.
That's great. Thank you. Anybody, uh, I don't know, you probably don't know most of the names that are here. But, um, so I'm, I'm on the planning board. James, who's next to, well, James is, uh, Jim Hargraves. He's, uh, a founder of the planning board, uh, well, maybe not a founder of the planning board, but certainly a founder of our zoning. Alan Pease is over, over here from sunny California, wherever the heck he is now. And, uh, also a member of the planning board, as is Terry, who I know you have met. Bruce is a longtime resident and, uh, local developer in town. Gary Bear is on the ZBA. Kathy Panagiotis and Alan Ewald are both on the, um, FinCom. And if that's Rebecca Walsh, that's Rebecca Walsh. She's on the FinCom. And, um. And, and Eldon, who's the chair of the FinCom, Eldon Gerhart. And I don't know Michelle or Cease or Stephen or Watek, but, um, you got, you got a nice collection of the, of the town. I don't know what we're called, but.
We were all waiting to see what you were going to put a label on us. The people to watch out for.
I'm trying to keep it professional.
Well, I, um, I sat for 15 years on my planning board here in the town of Middleton. So I'm, I'm familiar, um, I'm not familiar with this type of zoning. I've never seen this before. Of, of course, because it's predominantly for rural communities.
Right.
Um, but I, you know, when I first moved to Middleton, there was a little over three, maybe 4,000 people. And now we're up to about 10,000. So, um, that was a situation that we had too. We were a very rural town at the time. Developers found us and, um, started to just, you know, subdivision after subdivision. And so there's a lot of growing pains that come with that. So I understand that, uh, you're trying to preserve your rural nature and kind of control the growth. So I am, I am familiar with the, the terminology, what you're doing. So if there's anything I can do to assist you to, to get this, you know, through a town meeting or, um, you know, any technical issues. Getting it to town meeting, just please let me know and I'd be more than happy to help.
Great. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Yeah. And also just to say again, um, on the town of, the, the Ashby town website, um, there is written information about this. There's a summary of the, of the proposed by law as well as the current draft of the by law, which I believe is considered draft four. And, um. So you can, you can look at the summary, you can look at the details and, um. You know, you can, people can come to any of our meetings and, um, ask questions. Cause it's, it's kind of, we're heading into the spring. Well, more or less heading into the spring, but we're into the busy, busy setting up this zoning process. Finalizing the details of the by law and getting that shepherded through to the, to the warrants. So, um, yeah.
Just a question. I, I don't know if the planning board would be amenable, but I would be to providing my contact information. So that anyone on the planning board that's not a quorum. Or doesn't do it in serial fashion. Or anyone else wants to call me up or text me or email me. And dig a little deeper into this. Ask follow-up questions that they didn't occur to them tonight. I, I would be happy to do that. I'd bill you for it, of course, but. But I, I'd be happy to do that if, if you thought it might, um, it might help.
Thank you. Um, do you want to put that information into the chat just now for the people that are here at the very least? Yeah, it's down at the bottom of your screen. There's a little, there's a little chat icon. And you just click on it and then you can type into it and you hit enter and it presto, it turns up for everybody. We should probably decide as a board whether we want to put his contact information on the website. I'm not particularly interested in inundating him with hours of. Circular arguments, but I am definitely, um, interested in what the rest of you think.
I think it's great. And when they do contact him, just get the, make sure you get their credit card number.
I, I also have a phone. I, I hit, I hit enter too soon. So. I have a cell phone.
I was going to say, actually, I think, I think, um, it, it would be good to, to put your, um, for us to put your, um, your. Sorry, words are escaping me right now. Um, your credentials, if you will, on the, on the page. So that people understand what your background is, because I know it's said here. But I think, um, from what I understand, there may be some question about, um, the experience. People don't understand the, I, the experience that you bring to the table.
Oh, my God.
We'll talk about it.
Yeah, maybe you can grab, um, the first, the first, um, slide where Jeff Scott has.
Yeah.
Credentials and stuff and put that out there. Yeah, I, um. I'm, I'm just concerned with, you know, I just don't want.
Not the, yeah, no, no, I don't, I don't think we should be putting your phone number up there. I, I just, just for credentials, I think should be sufficient and we can funnel questions through.
Yeah, we can. I mean, we really, we really know, the board really knows this stuff pretty well at this point, so.
Okay, so, so email address, but no phone number?
No. Just your, just who you are, what you've done, what your background is, um, that you gave birth to this, to this movement, et cetera. And we, what we can do is I'll set something up on the website so that if there are any questions that come in, they'll, we can, um, funnel them through to you.
Okay. I mean, in other words, basically having a filter between.
Yes.
The, 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 the masses and the, and the expert.
Yeah, because if we're not taking credit card numbers, we should be very careful about the bill that might be generated, so.
All right. So what, what did I say? I said Jeff Blacy, Rural Planning Associate at crocker.com. And then I, in the second one, I said Jeff Blacy, Land Use Planner. For 33 years in Massachusetts, creator of NR PZ zoning approach.
That would be great in email.
Okay. So now I should just hit that and then. You've got it in chat. So that's where you wanted it, chat?
Well, yeah, it didn't turn up.
Yeah. You may have sent it to somebody else. Oh, I think I know who you sent it to.
Kathy Ping.
Yeah.
Oh, because Kathy sent a chat, right?
Yeah, 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 that's why. See, I can't say that, that, that just go to you.
All right, well.
That's, I'll send you an email and then you can just email me back.
Okay.
Make it easy.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll throw my resume in there as well.
Yep, that would be excellent. Thank you.
Okay. But I'm, I'm, I'm happy to talk to any skeptical landowner, skeptical conservation minded person. The woman who was interested in co-housing last time. You know, a- anyone who has reservations or doesn't, or doesn't feel like they understand it, um, well enough. I'm, I'm, I'm happy to follow up with them personally.
Great. Thank you. We will, um, also be thinking about, uh. Yeah, the others, other ways, um, you know, other ways to, to get your voice out there. Bruce, did you want to say something?
No, I just think it's good to go through the planning board. Like he says, he gets paid for it. You don't have to everybody calling and getting some ridiculous bill which got to go to the town. So, yeah, that kind of, kind of threw up a red flag in my, on my hand too, when it says, uh, oh, yeah, give him his phone number. Get out of there. I think questions should go to the planning board.
Yeah.
And then you can filter it to him.
Yeah. Other people have questions, thoughts, final things I'd like to say before we, uh, decide whether or not we can adjourn.
Excuse me. Uh, my name's Steve. Uh, I own a property up on Bennett Road.
Bennett Road?
Yeah, yeah, up at 149 Bennett Road. And, um, I wanted to pose the question on trying to get the host community agreement for, um, a tier one, uh, grow and, uh, extraction. As well as, since out here, um, I don't, and I was just posing the question hard. Do you have available host agreements for possibly a new owner to come in? Or, or my, to utilize?
Alan, do you, can you say, address that at all?
Uh, yeah, if it's a host community agreement, Stephen, uh, that's negotiated with the selectmen. If you're looking for something related to planning or zoning, then you would bring it to the planning board. But if you're just looking at host community agreements, uh, I'd approach the selectmen on that.
Or our new town administrator.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Are we ready to wrap up? All right, um, the planning board has another, has a regularly scheduled meeting next Wednesday evening. And there is a public hearing on this March, maybe 23rd. And, um, the information on the website, if you have questions, you're welcome to come to the planning board meetings. There's always room to talk about it there. And, um, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Or adjourn.
That would be you, Jim.
Of course, it's Brad's time.
I'd like to get brownie points for eight twenty-nine. All in favor?
Terry, I.
Alan, Jeanie, I. Thank you very much, everybody, for coming. Really appreciate it. Thanks, Bruce, for showing up. I really appreciate that.
Thank you, Bruce.
Good night, everyone.
Take care.
Be well.
Bye, Jeff.